Madam Clerk. We'll call the Lathir Village City Council Meeting from Monday, April 20th to order. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings. Present. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Well, we were gonna say the Pledge of Allegiance, so Scott has to put up his flag.
Sorry, guys, I lost audio. I'm here.
Okay, I gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just talking about the flag, so if we can just say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving down to the approval of the agenda. First part is going to be the consent agenda, and this is gonna be for the approval of minutes from March 2nd.
Hang on, don't we gotta do the agenda first?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I jumped down all the way.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yes, on the consent agenda, items C and D, can we move that off the consent agenda? Because I do have some edits to that.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry. Roll call. Roll call, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here. Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Here. I mean, yes, I'm sorry, I'm following you in, yes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda, so we're gonna be considering the approval of minutes from March 2nd, 2020, for the study session, and the approval of minutes from March 2nd, 2020, for the council meeting. The approval of minutes for March 30th, 2020, special council meeting, and approval of minutes for April 6th, 2020, budget study is gonna be separated out of there, so.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
To approve the March 30th, special council meeting minutes, along with the April 6th, 2020 budget study session.
You said you're making a motion to approve it, is that, we're just approving A and B right now?
Oh, okay. Well, let me reword that then. I moved ahead. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 2nd, 2020, as well as the minutes from March 2nd, for the council meeting on March 2nd, 2020.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I guess I shouldn't have needed to have any discussion, there's no separate session. Can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Member Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the March 2nd study session and the March 2nd city council meeting. Approved.
Okay, so, thank you.
Make a motion for those in discussion, correct?
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to approve the March 30th, 2020, special council meeting and the April 6th, 2020 budget session.
It's been moved in second, and so we're gonna go into discussions for the, sorry, March 30th, 2020, special council meeting first.
Okay, so, yeah, I think on that one, I just, hey, this one is just a typo. On page 13, about a third of the way down, authorizing and directing administration to enter, it should be into. That one's completely minor, but then, on page 16, about three quarters of the way down at the bottom, it says grant writer position will be a part-time position. It wasn't the grant writer position, it was the assistant city administrator position. Then on page. And then on page 17, the first paragraph at the end, it said that Lathir Services, respect to Lathir Services, it said they were gonna add an additional staff person. That was, that person was added last year. They approved that last year, that wasn't something that they were asking to do this
We don't hear you anymore, Bruce.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Well, he didn't hear me.
Think of that heard me. That's all I had, Kelly.
Okay. Any other discussions for those? Hearing none, can you do a roll call?
Yes, roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to accept the March 30th special meeting minutes approved.
Okay. Um, next up is gonna be the consideration approval of the monthly dispersment reports for the month of February 2020. And this is gonna reflect expenditures from the general fund, which includes police and fire services, and the recreation department, major roads, local roads, water and sewer services, and for the downtown development authority. The Lathir Service Contract, which looks like it gets cut off, so I'm just gonna stop.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the dispersments for the month of February 2020, for a total of $400,057.17, which is comprised of expenditures in the general fund of $252,000, roughly $252,000, $9,878 in major roads, $8,037 in local roads, $12,218 in the downtown development authority, and $117,758 in the water and sewer area.
My second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ferguson. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And carried for the dispersment report for the month of February 2020, approved.
Okay. I hope you all can still hear me, can you?
Yes.
Okay, good. Next up, we'll have the consideration of the approval of monthly dispersment reports for the month of March 2020. And this motion is to approve dispersments for the month of March 2020, and this is gonna reflect expenditures from the general fund, which includes police and fire services, and the recreation department, major roads, local roads, water and sewer services, and for the downtown development authority, and the Lathir Services Contract.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Donna, go ahead, Donna, you can do it.
I'll make a motion for consideration approval of the monthly dispersment reports for the month of March 2020, which is Fund 101, the general fund, for $227,741.18. Major roads, $10,931.48. Local roads, $8,018.21. Capital acquisition fund for $5,737.50. Downtown development authority, $10,314.37. And the water and sewage for $222,838.55. The total of $486,481.93.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carried. Dispersment report for March 2020, approved.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration for approval of the third quarter investment.
I'll make a motion to approve the third quarter investment report.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings. Motion approved for the third quarter investment report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the consideration for acceptance of the departmental reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the department reports.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope, okay, roll call, sorry, just trying to find the page that these are on.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion approved for the departmental reports.
Thank you. Next, we'll have public comments for the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. I thought I saw, I thought I saw three chats. Yep, I see, okay, so, is there anyone from the public? It looks like we have. How many people on here? Twelve, I'll take it once.
Public is on.
Pardon me?
Just looked a second ago, I didn't see anybody from the public being on. Yeah, it's just us.
Yeah, I didn't see anyone either. I don't see anyone.
Okay, we don't have a public hearing, so we will go right into our action requests, which, what page does the action request start on? Someone tell me? Okay, answer myself then, thank you. So first up is going to be the motion, or action request for consideration for approval is the approved publishing, public notice and scheduled public hearing for the capital 2020 capital, wait a minute. Approval published, public notice and scheduling public hearing 2020 capital improvement program on May 4th, 2020. Am I on the right one?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to direct the city clerk to publish the notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 capital improvement plan, at least one week in advance of the hearing to be held on Monday, May 4th, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to schedule a public hearing on May 4th, for the 2020 capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Next up is a, well, on my agenda says a resolution, but, okay, the motion to publish public notice and schedule hearing for the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget?
I'll make a motion to approve public, publishing, the public notice and scheduling a fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget hearing on May 18th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried to schedule a public hearing for May 18th, for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget, approved.
Thank you. Next action request is for, up for consideration is the adoption, the motion to adopt the final delinquent special assessment rolls.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt, adopt the resolution as provided for the delinquent special assessments.
My second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I had two quick questions, and I think we talked about this last year, but I don't remember. There was a $29,000 assessment for a water bill for a resident on California. Is there some special circumstances with that? Do we, what's that all about?
There were pipes that were broken in the house, and the water was running for quite a some time, it was just pouring out of the basement.
Okay.
And the DPS found it.
Oh, is it, is it a vacant, is it a vacant house?
Yes.
Okay, so who, who, well, I guess whoever the current owner was pays for that, correct?
Either that, or it went back to the bank, or it's going on the taxes, so whoever pays the tax is gonna pay the bill.
Right, okay. And then, on the special, on the nuisance cut, that house, the house on Lathir Boulevard, for $8,700, is that multiple years?
Yes, it is. That is a vacant lot that the city was cutting, and the city, the DPS thought it was city-owned property, but it is not.
And I guess the question I have, if I remember correctly, it was, it was a pretty high amount last year, and so, and we approved the special assessment, so why wouldn't it, why wouldn't the balance, the bulk of that have been paid last year?
For the grass cutting?
Yeah.
No, it was not approved on the special assessment list last year, it was talked about, but it was never put on the list to be approved.
Got it, okay, thank you, I'm good.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that that's on, here's on page 166 of your agenda packet. I didn't know if you wanted to go there with the screen or not.
Can you see the screen?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, is it there? I mean, yeah, I thought that's the page. Aren't we on the page, or no?
No, you're not on the page.
You're on page two.
You gotta scroll.
Oh, in front of me, I'm on page 166.
Okay, someone else is sharing.
No, that's Kelly's screen, or one of her screens.
I have two screens standing on.
She's got, you've got one open, I think.
Well, we've all got the packet, so.
Yep, I mean, I see it, I'm on the right page.
Oh, I thought, well, I see it also, so I don't have a clue what's going on at this point, so, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Member Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carried to adopt the final delinquent special assessment rolls.
There you go.
Thank you, I'm in a different screen, sorry, I do have two screens going on, I apologize. I'm just scrolling through, and no one said anything before for any of the other ones, so.
I was too busy looking at mine.
Sorry, I guess I should have had Scott keep it. Thank you. So, the next up is a consideration for the 2019 Consumers Annual Report on Water Quality.
This is the annual report that we're required by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, now called Eagle, to report on the testing of our water quality, and our water exceeds all of the expectations and standards. The one thing of note, however, is that the samples that were taken last August, they, there was a delay in the processing. I don't know if those on the tester side or on the recipient's side at the state, and by the time they did the testing, the pH level didn't meet the requirement. Noting that Eagle does not have a standard relative to what the pH standard is supposed to be. SOCA made every attempt to contest that because a number of communities were impacted, but nonetheless, we had to have that notation in our water report, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
There will be a re-sampling this summer.
Thank you. So we'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the City of Lathir Village 2019 Consumers Annual Report on Water Quality, and instruct the clerk to forward a copy of the report to the State of Michigan, DEQ, SOCA, and Oakland County Health Department, along with the certificate of distribution as required under the laws of Michigan.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, we should probably change the, on the memo up top that says Andrew Potter, city administrator, might wanna change that.
Holy cow.
You know, I thought I saw that, but I thought it was my imagination, I really thought it was my imagination.
Who is that?
Yeah, who is that?
We should keep that in as a reminder.
Was there any, was there any other discussion?
No, thanks, Celine.
Okay, hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Member Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carried for the 2019 Consumers Annual Report on Water Quality, approved.
Thank you. Next is the proclamation for Arbor Day. Cheryl, would you like to present this?
Well, it's a different year, again, most of the Arbor Day celebrations have been canceled. Nonetheless, as part of our Tree City requirement, we are to adopt a resolution each year, so this is the proclamation indicating that we are honoring Arbor Day, and hopefully we'll have a tree planting ceremony at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you, because we don't have to do, we do not have to do a action request for that one, correct?
How did we sign it, though? Is there, that's something that we could really sign? Yeah. We, we can send you our digital signatures.
Pardon me?
I don't know if it's necessary, but in the event that it becomes so, how would we handle it?
Am I phrasing it?
You can't hear me?
Are you there?
I am.
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, I thought Donna was still talking.
I was, I was just saying, you know, this may not require all of our signatures, but I think that we need to think about in the future, if we do need to sign something, how we're, how we were going to handle that, and just, just a proactive thought.
I think it's already signed, already signed it.
We did?
I did.
You did, okay, so this isn't one that we all sign. I mean, there's, there's, there's cases where we all sign proclamations, or we all something, well, we could talk about that later, but, yes, Bonnie.
Okay, city administrator.
If you had something that needed to be signed, you could sign them in counterpart, so each, each council member would get the document emailed to them, they'd sign it, and scan and send it back, and then compile all of this one document.
Okay, thank you, Scott, for that, thank you.
City administrator.
Okay. One thing I do want to bring to your attention, well, two things. One, the Your Town magazine has gone to the printer, but apparently bulk mail is not a priority with the post office, so at some point in time, it will be mailed out to residents, and hopefully they'll be receiving that soon. Also, we had an issue with the water bill this last mailing, one of which was with the printer itself, the, some of the bills were sent in duplicates, some were double printed, one person's bill on the front, and another person, another address on the back, so we went ahead and issued a new run of water bills. However, we also discovered that the credit card company posting for the payments through the credit card had not been applied to the accounts yet, so as you can understand, probably everyone is short-staffed these days, and things aren't going as smoothly or timely as you would like. So some people received bills that did not reflect their most recent credit card payment, but we just wanted to let people know that we are aware of the issues, and if there are any fees or stuff, those will be waived for this month.
Thank you.
I was gonna let you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wanted to let you know that the office is still under the stay, stay, stay home orders, and at least through the end of the month, and we're waiting to hear how long that may be extended, or if it's going to be phased out going forward. Any staff, as they're coming into the office, they'll have to conduct their daily screenings to indicate that they are in good health, as well as now we're taking their temperatures. Those are probably the main things I just wanted to mention to you. Oakland County is now conducting testing at a couple of sites, those are posted on the website, on the Facebook page, and I think they were sent to everyone by email as well.
That's it?
That's it.
Thanks. City attorney?
There was, I did, I did wanna bring up, and we did kinda ran out of time in the study session, to get some feedback from council, but typically this time of year is when I'll send over to that, the notice, a publication for nuisance cutting. I haven't done that because of the most recent executive order that, right now, deems landscaping services net is not essential. Now, there have been some communities, Hazel Park, Madison Heights, City Warren. City Warren, Orient Township, a couple other ones, that they've recently signed resolutions that are based on control of pests and rodents, that they are moving forward with their nuisance cuts and they're allowing landscapers to conduct business as long as it's done in a safe, social distancing manner. So I, it's a little early right now, I think, as far as, you know, active landscaping, active landscaping going on. My thought was kind of to see what happens in the next couple of weeks, if it's lifted or if it's continued, but if, if there's any feedback from council, if that's something that they would consider doing or if they wanted to just kind of wait it out and see, see what the state directs on that topic.
I think that that's a good topic, and actually, we do have time that we can talk about that because I did look into, Cheryl and I looked into other cities, what they were doing regarding landscaping, and I don't know about anybody else, but I've had a few emails regarding the whole inability to have your, your grass cut. So, let, yeah, let, let's discuss that. Like, you know, now.
I definitely understand the sentiment. I guess my question is, can the local community over, take action that essentially overrides the state order?
What the, the other communities have done is essentially they're saying they're not going to enforce that portion of the state order. So you wouldn't, from a local, from a local law enforcement standpoint, there, there would be no action. And I think Scott's still on the, on this call, but what we discovered is that there hasn't been, they, the state has basically punted enforcement back to the local law enforcement agencies. So really, it's, it's going to be our, our police department that would be ticketing and enforcing these provisions of the order, so.
Is there no way that the county state police could enforce?
They could, potentially, but again, it's, and I, I don't want to speak for state police, but I would be shocked if they were driving through neighborhoods looking for landscapers.
So my, my thought is that we stick with the state order. I mean, this, the governor's, you know, put out this order. It's for a couple more weeks. I think her whole point is, or one of the points is, yeah, landscaping, you might think it's, it's socially distant if it's a couple people, whatever, but that person's driving from somewhere and they might have to, you know, that puts, that inherently creates more risk. What if they have to get a gas, go to the gas station, do the, interact with other people, those kind of things? I think that was the whole point of the, the matter for this shutdown. So in my opinion, we should stick to what the state order is at this point.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with, with Saleem. You know, I, I think we should revisit it maybe at, at our next meeting in a couple of weeks because I, I'm guessing that, you know, if I had to guess, I would say that in the next order, she's probably going to relax that requirement, given the amount of, of negative feedback she's had. And, and probably, while I agree with you, Saleem, totally, it's, you know, it's probably low risk that there would be any type of spread, but I think she's going to relax that. So I think it might make sense to just wait a couple of weeks and readdress, revisit it again.
And I think that, I think that I agree with it. Excuse me, I agree with it for a different reason, and that's just, you know, following the governor's orders, you know, as a, as a city. And so, I, I totally agree that we should. We should follow her lead.
Yeah, I agree.
I do hope that it gets relaxed for me.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have anything else?
No, that was, that was the only thing I had, I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thank you. Um, reports from boards, commissions, committees? Anything?
I can report on the Marijuana Committee. We had a meeting in April, which went well, discussed our goals and what we want to do within the committee, which has come up with, you know, do our due diligence, do some research, talk to people, and then come up ultimately with a recommendation for the city council on, on revisit whether to, this is a revisit of our, of our kind of decision not to allow retail marijuana. We put a sunset provision on it, so our goal is to come, come forward with a new recommendation on whether we should keep that decision, which is to not allow recreational marijuana or change that. So, we're moving forward with that, we had a good meeting, we assigned tasks to everybody, everyone has something to do. And we are working on those tasks throughout the month, we'll have another meeting May fifth. We're not necessarily going to be complete with all our tasks by then, but we'll have an update meeting and then continue forward completing the different tasks, so. So it's good, just, we're moving forward on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give one on the Infrastructure Committee. We, we've developed, over the la, since November, we've developed several, namely three, three plans based upon the input that we've received from and around the election, kind of paying note to some of the things that people were suggesting and, and some of the things that people didn't like about the other plan, the, the plan that was offered in November. We've developed three plans, and we had intended to have a, a, an open forum town hall a month ago to get further input from the residents on the three plans that we've, potential plans that we've developed. And now, since we couldn't do that in person, we are doing that virtually, via virtual town hall. The information to join the town hall is posted on our city website, it's posted on our city Facebook site, it's posted on villagers. So it's very easy to join in. And those meetings are going to be this Thursday at seven PM, and then this Sunday at three PM. So hopefully, you, you can join and learn a little bit more about what we're proposing and provide input in any way that you think maybe we should tweak any of those plans and maybe also give us input in terms of which of those three plans you think is, is the most reasonable for our community. So hopefully, you'll attend, attend those meetings.
Anyone else?
Is that a Zoom link, Bruce?
Yep, it's a Zoom meeting, and again, all, all the information is available on the city website.
Yep.
And, and on those Facebook sites for the city.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't necessarily have a report, SimCOG has been a little quiet. They've been doing meetings relative to what's going on, the COVID-19. But I'm, I'm curious to know, and I don't know if we have an answer for this tonight, how the census is going, how we're doing with the census for Letherton Village?
I don't have the exact number, approximately, it's just over seventy percent of the self-reporting. There is a conference call tomorrow to update all of the communities in Oakland County and talk about other strategies to try to get as much participation as we can.
Okay, so, I just want to put that plug in, seventy percent, though? Did you?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we all, make sure we get it in, so, thank you.
Is there any unfinished or new business? I don't think anyone else has joined for a public comment, but I'll open for a public comment if there's someone else, but it doesn't look like there is. So.
Nope.
Go to Mayor and Council comments. Anyone?
I just had one question, that we weren't able to get to in the study session. And you may have talked about this in one of the meetings that I was absent while I was on vacation and quarantined, but did we ever get a, a final resolution with the Russian ballet? I know, I know obviously the COVID situation is, is, is going to affect that, but I know they're, they typically contract for an entire year, so I, I didn't know where, where we ended up with that. Cheryl, is there any update on that?
There isn't an update, it was my understanding they were considering looking for another location. I believe their contract ends around the end of June. So, we're open to conversations in regards to what it will look like if they choose to continue. I have not heard back from them since this outbreak has occurred.
Okay, and, and has there been any update with the, the lights on the trees in the house in Letherton Boulevard? I know the code enforcement said he tried to reach out to them and he was hung up on. Was there any follow-up?
I do believe a notice was mailed to their house.
Okay, thank you.
What did we resolve with the house in the woods, the property, the house in the woods? What was our next step on that one?
Um, we're supposed to have it on one of our study sessions to discuss it because it does need to be resolved relatively soon. And I know that this one, this study session was probably stock full of too much, but maybe on May fourth, that will be put on there again for, you know, everyone to, give everyone time to think about what we should be doing with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, so, one, to give an update about COVID, I think some of you already saw, but we had a, it was an article, Cheryl, you can help me with this, and thank you for sending it to WWJ.
I know. I know, my nails are too long, I can't type anymore. I need, I need a manicure.
So I have to share what we're laughing at, because I was like, what is WWF radio? You know, but in, once I read it, I was like, oh, you meant WWJ, because I was concerned that we were on the wrestling radio station for whatever reason. So, um, they, I guess they ran a story, well Cheryl, you can say what the, the story was that they ran.
The story indicated that in Oakland County, Oak Park, and the City of Letherton Village had the highest incidence of the virus and virus-related deaths, which is not an accurate portrayal of what's happening in Letherton Village. Our numbers are actually relatively small. But because we shared the ZIP code four eight zero seven six with the City of Southfield, it's all combined together, so if you go on the Oakland County website where they have the GIS map, it identifies the entire ZIP code as Letherton Village. So it's an inaccurate portrayal of what's happening within our community as opposed to what's happening in that entire ZIP code. And we've been struggling with getting that information extracted, which the mayor has been successful in getting it on a couple of occasions, but on an ongoing basis. If you just look at that map, it's very easy to incorrectly interpret it.
So I've been in contact pretty much every week with the Oakland County Executive, David Coulter's office. And what I was told this last time is that they're not going to update the map to show that Letherton is a little, you know, a, a little part of the map, but she'll give me the information, you know, and so even though we had a smaller number, it's still a larger number when it comes to the amount of residents we have. So right now, we have, as of April seventeenth, we have seventy-five cases with five fatalities. And if you feel as though you have any of the symptoms or you, you want to get tested, please call Oakland County Nurse, and that number is one eight hundred eight four eight five five three three. I know that on, I think this is, yeah, it was Thursday, I guess, all of the mayors in Oakland County, and it looks like the city managers also, we will have an update call with the county exec on Thursday, so perhaps we'll have some more numbers at that time. Um. One thing that I was going to say is that during this time that we're in, in this pandemic, is that I think that we really, as leaders, really need to also just show grace when we're conducting our business and, and trying to run the city. And, because one, we don't know who those five fatalities are, we don't know what families they are, we don't know how many people have been directly affected by this. And as I told a couple of people, it's already been nine, maybe it's ten today, because I think I didn't know, but so, ten people that I personally know that have died from COVID. And so, some of the things that we're doing, like what I was saying earlier, is that I don't think that we should be as aggressive with our code enforcement. I think that, that, you know, it's something that we can all discuss now, but I think that we, one, don't have a full-time code enforcement person. You know, we have, Kelda is only coming in, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, Monday and Wednesdays, I think?
Basically, yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm just, this is, this was on my mind, and I know that some, some things that have happened around the neighborhood of calling into the police about people not doing, you know, not doing the social distancing or assuming something is not what it is. So I'm just, I'm just saying, no, we just need to show some grace and, and try to be more compassionate to our neighbors. So, um, yeah, that was just, I thought that we, we could discuss it, or it's just my feelings about it, so.
I agree a hundred percent, Kelly, yep.
Um. And I think also, well, and I'll, I'll discuss that with Cheryl later, but those are just my thoughts, this is a really, it's a hard time for a lot of people. And not just really when it comes to people that are losing people to COVID, but also you don't know how many people are living alone and having to deal with loneliness and having to deal with depression. So I just think as, as a human being, number one, and that's, you know, forget being a leader, just to show some grace and mercy and compassion to your fellow neighbor, you know, this period. And, and that's just my, my thoughts, there's some, obviously some things that were on my mind, so. Anybody else have any?
I, I totally agree with you, and I, I just wanted to give a shout out on that, on that note, Kelly. Kabob Kabob, we're very proud of the fact that Kabob Kabob donated so much food the other day to the Beaumont medical staff. I thought that that was excellent, and just reminding us all to continue to support the restaurants here in Letherton Village, but wanted to give a shout out, that was something that we should all be proud of in our community.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, there is a lot of residents that have been going way above and beyond of making masks for, you know, the, the frontline folks and, and taking up orders. So only one person goes and picks up dinner for people. I think that, one, you know, we are showing the type of people that we are in, in our village and that we, we do care about each other. But I just, you know, just maybe things might not hit you the same way, but just, you know, I, I really, I'm stressing the compassion and, and.
Yeah.
Well, that's hitting me, because I've lost, I've lost quite.
That I have for right now.
Don't say it, yeah, but.
Can you all still hear me, because it looks like you froze, and I keep saying that my internet is, obviously, my internet, okay. So, anybody else have anything for the good of the cause?
Yeah, just part of the reasons why, you know, I reached out to all the, the couple of residents to start that podcast is because, yeah, we got a lot of lonely people, and we wanted to make sure that they understood that the city is still running. I mean, people are watching the videos that you've put out, Kelly, and we've just all, we've been just trying to point to that, and at the same time, let people know, you're not going to try to go through it alone, you know, you've got people out here that can actually, you know, try to bridge a gap to, to let you know, hey, you're not alone in it. So, yeah, you're right, we, we need to at least try to show more compassion as these weeks progress, because we don't know when this thing's going to end.
Yeah.
That was, that was just my little thing, it looks like, um, something that I just got, it looks like the, which I don't think that I'll be doing this, but so I guess I should be talking. So I guess I should be talking to Cheryl, but it looks like the, this is where the problem comes in about our ZIP code because it is a, looks like a journalist wants to talk to me about how high our, I'm trying to find it now, how high our cases are, and that's just, it's not accurate. So, anyway. Okay, guys. Um, I mean, ladies and gentlemen, you know, you get a little lax when you get on the Zoom conference call, so.
So we're ready for a motion?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
That's okay. But you guys look good. You look healthy. God bless you. And I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is a second. You all stay safe, and we will talk relatively soon. Thank you.
We're, we're all in. Okay, bye-bye.
See you later.
Take care, everybody.